Y'a personne ? Vous êtes là ? Vous levez la main gauche. Ok, c'est bon. On est là. Une grande joie d'être ensemble, de se retrouver. Et on veut vraiment accueillir tous les pasteurs et les épouses qui nous rejoignent, tous nos frères et sœurs qui sont ici, tout le monde qui est avec nous. C'est si bien de se voir les uns les autres et nous voulons surtout accueillir nos frères et sœurs qui nous suivent en ligne. Nous allons leur faire une hand, nous allons leur dire "hi". C'est tellement une grâce d'être ensemble. Et pour une fois, c'est vous qui accueillez chacun de ceux qui suivent Mauricio. Alors comment vous les accueillez-vous ? Avec un grand aplauso généreux. C'est bien d'être ici, de se rassembler. Il y a deux ans que nous ne nous sommes pas rassemblés pour prier le Seigneur. Donc c'est un grand privilège de faire ça aujourd'hui. C'est un don d'être ensemble, de voir les uns les autres, de prier le Seigneur. Quand le peuple de Dieu se rassemble, c'est extraordinaire. Et de voir tous vous, de voir ce que le Gospé l'a fait dans nos coeurs, c'est tellement un cadeau précieux. Le vendredi, quand j'écoutais le message, mon cœur battait si vite parce que ça me rappelait à ces disciples qui ont suivi Jésus, qui ont marché avec Jésus mais ne l'ont pas reconnu directement une fois qu'il était ressuscité. Mais quand ils l'ont reconnu, il a dit : "Ton cœur ne brûle pas, ton cœur bat-t-il plus vite quand tu entends tout ce que je dois te dire ?" Et quand je entends le Gospé, mon cœur, c'est comme s'il était en feu. Ton cœur n'est pas en feu quand tu entends la vérité. Quand tu entends le Gospé qui vient construire nos vies, qui parle directement à nos coeurs, c'est incroyable. Ça met au feu nos coeurs. Ça nous fait plus envie d'entendre quoi que ce soit d'autre. Nous ne voulons pas de mélange ou dilution ou compromis. Nous voulons juste la vérité et rien d'autre que la vérité. Et c'est pourquoi, ouvrons nos coeurs à la vérité. Parce que parfois la vérité nous confronte, elle nous défie, elle nous défie. Mais le travail que cela fait, le travail du Saint-Esprit est merveilleux. Et c'est le fruit du message de la croix que nous avons embrassé. Et j'espère que chacun d'entre nous, nous embrassons de plus en plus, que nous l'accueillons dans nos coeurs et dans nos vies. Nous ne voulons pas laisser, nous ne voulons pas perdre quoi que ce soit que le Seigneur a pour nous et tout ce qu'il veut faire dans nos coeurs. Ce qui est pourquoi, chaque fois que nous sommes rassemblés, nous ouvrons nos coeurs pour entendre le Gospé, pour entendre la parole de Dieu, particulièrement du ministère des cinq fentes que le Seigneur a mis entre nous. Nous ne sommes pas ici pour élever un homme, mais nous reconnaissons l'Anointing de Dieu. Nous reconnaissons les ministères que le Seigneur a élevés entre nous parce que nous sommes le fruit de ces ministères. La unité que nous avons dans le Saint-Esprit, c'est tellement un don. Nous ne voulons pas de quoi que ce soit d'autre. Et quand je vous vois, quand nous sentons la unité qu'il y a entre nous, nous pouvons être fiers de ça. Fiers de nous avoir accueillis le Gospé et embrassé le Gospé, de nous avoir des hommes qui sont venus avant nous, qui étaient prêts, prêts à payer le prix. Nous l'avons entendu ces derniers jours, ces derniers jours passés et nous allons continuer à l'entendre ce matin. Comment le Gospé, la vérité vient et retourne et surpasse de nombreuses forteresses et équilibres dans nos vies et nous ramène sur une solide fondation solide. Et s'il doit venir et bouger les choses un peu, alors laissez-le venir pour que nous soyez tous sur une solide fondation solide et que le Seigneur peut construire la maison que nous sommes faite de pierres vivantes construite sur la base des apôtres et des prophètes. Alléluia ! Nous voyons, nous vivons ce que la première, la première église a vécu. Et il y a des miracles à venir. Nous devons chercher la unité du Saint-Esprit. Nous devons la chercher, nous devons la vouloir et de plus en plus. Que le Gospé, la lumière du Gospé, pleure nos coeurs et que la révélation de la croix de Jésus pleure nos coeurs pour que nous puissions comprendre les choses du Saint-Esprit de la même façon, d'une seule façon, avec un seul cœur, avec une seule... C'est ce que le Seigneur fait. Il construit entre nous pour que le monde chrétien puisse voir ce que le message de la croix, quand il est renvoyé à l'église, ce que le message de la croix peut accomplir au milieu du peuple de Dieu. Donc ce matin, nous ne serons pas tous assis à l'aise dans nos chaises. Nous allons se lever ensemble. Et nous allons mettre ce matin, ce service devant le Seigneur. Nous allons prier le Seigneur, le célébrer. C'est un moment de célébration. De célébrer Jésus pour ce qu'il est, qui il est, ce qu'il a fait pour nous. Peut-être que vous êtes ici pour la première fois, peut-être que vous nous observez pour la première fois. Mais c'est une opportunité pour nous tous, pour prier Jésus avec tous nos coeurs, pour profiter de ce qu'il a fait dans nos vies et pour ouvrir nos coeurs à ce qu'il a pour nous ce matin. Merci Seigneur. Merci pour la joie que nous avons d'être rassemblés ici ce matin. Pour vous prier, pour vous cultiver avec votre peuple, pour vous célébrer votre nom. Pour apprécier ce que vous avez commencé à faire dans nos coeurs pendant tous ces années et ce que vous avez toujours à faire, les miracles et les wonders que vous avez en stock. Merci Seigneur pour tout ce que vous avez accompli. Et nous vous célébrons ce matin, nous célébrons votre nom. Nous vous cultivons avec tous nos coeurs. Et avec mes frères et sœurs, nous célébrerons Jésus. Alléluia ! Applaudons le Seigneur, applaudons Jésus, célébrons le Seigneur.
...de nos chèvres nous marchons vers toi. Tame souveraine, afferris nos pas. Amen de lumière couvertes des clats. Soyez sur la Terre, né sages et de joie. Alléluia ! Alléluia que ton règne vienne. Mara nata, viens Jésus Rêve ton roi.
Libérés de nos chèvres.
Libres de nos chèvres nous marchons vers toi. Tame souveraine, afferris nos pas. Amen de lumière couvertes des clats. Soyez sur la Terre, né sages et de ta joie. Alléluia ! Alléluia que ton règne vienne. Mara nata, viens Jésus Rêve ton roi.
Proclamons sacré-ze au creux de la nuit. Nous cherchons sa face. Nous cherchons sa face au cœur de sa vie. Célébrons sa gloire, bannissons la peur. Chantons sa victoire.
Chantons sa victoire. Jésus Rêve ton roi. Que ton règne vienne. Mara nata, viens Jésus Rêve ton roi.
Y'a une foi, Alléluia ! Que ton règne vienne.
Alléluia que ton règne vienne. Mara nata, viens Jésus Rêve ton roi. Viens Jésus Rêve ton roi.
Alléluia ! Oui, nous t'acclamons ce matin Jésus. Nous te louons, nous célébrons ta présence.
Nous vous célébrons votre présence entre nous. Avec joie, nous entrons dans vos portes. C'est la chanson de votre gloire et de tout ce que vous avez fait. Et vous êtes dignes de prier. Et c'est de vous, Seigneur, pour vous que nous ferons des cris de joie, ferons un bruit joyeux.
Alléluia ! Chaque prie appartient à Dieu.
Chaque prie appartient à notre Dieu. Chaque parole de culte, dans un champ de gloire.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie appartient à notre Dieu.
Chaque prie appartient à notre Dieu.
Chaque prie appartient à notre Dieu.
Chaque parole de culte.
Chaque parole de culte, dans un champ de gloire.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie appartient à notre Dieu.
Chante Alléluia à notre Dieu.
Chante Alléluia à notre Dieu.
Gloire Alléluia !
Gloire Alléluia à notre Dieu.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie appartient à notre Dieu.
Chante Alléluia à notre Dieu.
Chante Alléluia à notre Dieu. Gloire Alléluia à notre Dieu.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie, chaque prie appartient à notre Dieu. Chaque prie appartient à notre Dieu.
Chaque parole de culte.
Chaque parole de culte, dans un champ de gloire.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie appartient à notre Dieu.
Chante Alléluia à notre Dieu.
Chante Alléluia à notre Dieu.
Gloire Alléluia !
Gloire Alléluia à notre Dieu.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie appartient à notre Dieu. Chaque prie appartient à notre Dieu. Chaque parole de culte, dans un champ de gloire.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie appartient à notre Dieu.
Lève-toi, chante Alléluia à notre Dieu.
Chante Alléluia à notre Dieu. Gloire Alléluia ! Gloire Alléluia à notre Dieu.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie appartient à notre Dieu.
Dieu mon Sauveur.
Dieu mon Sauveur.
Dieu mon Heureux.
Dieu mon Heureux.
Dieu mon Deliverer.
Dieu mon Deliverer.
Oui il est.
Oui il est.
Oui il est.
Oui il est. Dieu mon Sauveur.
Dieu mon Heureux.
Dieu mon Heureux. Dieu mon Deliverer.
Oui il est.
Oui il est.
Oui il est.
Oui il est.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie appartient à notre Dieu.
Chaque parole de culte.
Chaque parole de culte, dans un champ de gloire.
Chaque prie.
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 Chaque prie appartient à notre Dieu.
Oh, nous t'adorons ce matin pro Jésus. Chantons louange et laveur toi.
Nous vous célébrons ce matin.
Calme ton cœur, il ne va pas te toucher.
On a tout à prier pour vous.
Dieu mon Sauveur.
Dieu mon Sauveur. Dieu mon Heureux.
Mon Deliverer.
Dieu mon Deliverer.
Oui il est.
Oui il est.
Oui il est.
Oui il est.
Dieu mon Sauveur.
Dieu mon Sauveur.
Dieu mon Heureux.
Dieu mon Heureux. Dieu mon Deliverer.
Oui il est.
Oui il est.
Oui il est.
Oui il est.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie appartient à notre Dieu.
Chaque parole de culte.
Chaque parole de culte, dans un champ de gloire.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie.
Chaque prie.
Tout notre prie.
Chaque 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 prie appartient à notre Dieu. Alléluia !
Alléluia !
Alléluia Jésus. Alléluia Seigneur.
Alléluia ! On est dans la joie encore ce matin. Louer le Seigneur, être ensemble dans la maison de Dieu. Oh quelle joie quand on me dit : "Allons à la maison de l'Éternel". Oh quel amour, oh quelle paix dans la maison de l'Éternel. Oh quelle joie quand on me dit :
Oh quelle joie quand on me dit : "Allons à la maison de l'Éternel".
Oh quel amour, oh quelle paix
Oh quel amour, oh quelle paix dans la maison de l'Éternel.
Y'a la joie.
Y'a la joie. Y'a la paix. Y'a l'amour dans la maison de Dieu. Y'a mes frères.
Y'a mes frères.
Y'a mes sœurs. Oh quel amour dans la famille de Dieu.
Oh quelle joie quand on me dit :
Oh quelle joie quand on me dit : "Allons à la maison de l'Éternel".
Oh quel amour, oh quelle paix
Oh quel amour, oh quelle paix dans la maison de l'Éternel. Y'a la joie.
Y'a la joie.
Y'a la paix.
Y'a la paix.
Y'a l'amour dans la maison de Dieu. Y'a mes frères.
Y'a mes frères.
Y'a mes sœurs.
Y'a mes sœurs.
Oh quel amour dans la famille de Dieu.
Oh qu'il est tout et agréable.
Oh qu'il est tout et agréable pour les frères de te mener ensemble.
Qu'il est tout et agréable.
Oh qu'il est tout et agréable pour les sœurs de te mener ensemble.
Y'a la joie, y'a la joie.
Y'a la joie.
Y'a la paix.
Y'a la paix. Y'a l'amour dans la maison de Dieu.
Y'a mes frères.
Y'a mes frères.
Y'a mes sœurs.
Y'a mes sœurs. Oh quel amour dans la famille de Dieu.
Y'a la joie.
Y'a la joie.
Y'a la paix.
Y'a la paix.
Y'a l'amour dans la maison de Dieu. Y'a mes frères.
Y'a mes frères.
Y'a mes sœurs.
Y'a mes sœurs.
Oh quel amour dans la famille de Dieu. Oh quelle joie quand on me dit :
Oh quelle joie quand on me dit : "Allons à la maison de l'Éternel". Oh quel amour, oh quelle paix dans la maison de l'Éternel.
Dans la maison.
Dans la maison de l'Éternel.
Dans ta maison.
Dans ta maison de l'Éternel. Oh quelle joie !
Alléluia Jésus.
Alléluia Seigneur.
Alléluia.
Quelle joie Seigneur. Oh quelle joie d'être assemblé en ton nom encore.
Tu rends nos cœurs d'espoirs.
Louer ton nom Jésus. Quelle joie de voir ta présence.
Quelle joie c'est d'être dans ta présence. De lever nos mains à toi. De vous cultiver. Jésus. Nous sommes son peuple. Un royaume saint. Une nation sainte. Un peuple choisi. Nous chante nos praises. Gloire à notre Seigneur. Notre Revenu. Notre Deliverer.
Ça c'est notre foi. Une nation choisie, un peuple plaqué. Nous chantons louange, gloire à notre roi. Notre rédacteur, libérateur. Nous sommes son peuple.
Nous voici.
Nous voici dans la maison du Père. Desièr nations.
Où nous sommes unis en vie.
Au gloire au Seigneur. Gloire au Seigneur.
C'est beau ce matin.
Désormais, aucune ne nous sépare. Nous serons unis par la foi. Au gloire au Seigneur. Gloire et doux. Où trouver telle miséricorde. Le pardon pour la vie éternelle. Où trouvons-nous cette grâce. D'être appelés enfants de Dieu. Nous sommes son peuple.
Nous sommes son peuple.
Ça c'est notre foi.
Un royaume saint.
Une nation choisie.
Un peuple choisi.
Un peuple plaqué. Nous chantons louange. Gloire à notre roi.
Gloire à notre Seigneur.
Notre rédacteur, libérateur. Nous sommes son peuple. Ça c'est notre foi. Une nation choisie, un peuple plaqué. Nous chantons louange, gloire à notre roi. Notre rédacteur, libérateur. Nous sommes son peuple. Ça me sont pas.
Nous sommes son peuple.
Jeter par son sang.
Choisi par toi Seigneur, nous sommes son peuple.
Appelé par son nom.
Oh par son nom, oh par son nom.
Ça me sont pas.
Ça porte nous Jésus.
Il est là. Euh toi. Fais-moi voir ta gloire.
Rève ô Seigneur, laissez-moi voir votre gloire.
Reçois la louange.
Reçois nos praises.
Toi la Nuit de Dieu.
Tu, le nom de Dieu.
Devant toi ébloui.
Nous standons devant toi.
Nous t'adorons.
En awe.
Sa majesté.
Cultiver son majesté.
Tu règne à jamais. Tu règes à jamais.
En vain pour evermore.
Au-dessus de tout.
Above everything else.
Nous crions saint. Saint est le Seigneur.
Il est là de toi Seigneur. Lève ton nom, à l'heure que nous te chantons.
Fais-moi voir ta gloire. Reçois la louange. Toi la Nuit de Dieu. Devant toi ébloui. Nous t'adorons sa majesté. Oui, tu règes à jamais. Au-dessus de tout.
Crions saint.
Nous crions saint. Saint est le Seigneur.
Crions saint.
Nous crions saint.
Saint.
Saint est le Seigneur.
Saint est le Seigneur.
Et jésus de tout. Il y a tant de Seigneur.
Haut et élevé. Nous pourrons devoir. Dire certaines.
De recevoir toute la gloire, toute la loi.
En les miracles et des pouvoirs dits.
That was your praises.
Restaurant.
Working on us and serving us. Restoring your life.
L'or il vient en ton dos, tu fais saint.
We glorify your name, you are holy.
Alléluia ! Saint le Seigneur, quelle grâce de le connaître mes frères et sœurs et de marcher dans la sainté à laquelle il nous appelle à marcher.
And to walk in the holiness that he asks of us, so that we might glorify him. Welcome, all of you, please take your seat. This morning, we'd like to take this opportunity to give to the Lord. We don't have to invite you to do this, you need to feel in your heart how much the Lord has given for us. And for us in return, what can we give? Whatever we give is so small in comparison to what he gave us. So I invite you all to be grateful to the Lord and to give whatever you have planned with all your heart in freedom. There'll be three baskets in front and two baskets in the middle aisle. and two baskets in the middle aisle. So that wherever you are, you can reach a basket easily. So if you're in the front two sections, please come up through the middle corridor and go back to your seats around the outsides. And the same for those at the back. So please come and bring your offering with all your hearts and we will continue to praise the Lord. Let's give for God's work. Let's stand up and thank the Lord. Thank you, Lord, for your presence. Thank you for this opportunity that we have to bless you. We want to participate in your work. Lead all things, Lord God, for your glory. Thank you for what you're doing in the hearts of each person here. Glory be to your name. And we're singing "I worship you, Jesus". With all my heart. With all my strength. I worship you. And I love to worship you.
I worship you, Jesus. I worship you. With all of my heart. With all of my soul. I love you. I love to worship you.
Mets-toi debout et adorons Jésus !
I worship you, Jesus. I worship you. With all of my heart. With all of my soul. I love you. I love to worship you. Oui, je t'adore ! Oui, je t'adore ! Jésus, oui, je t'adore ! De tout mon cœur. De toute ma force. Je t'adore. J'aime t'adorer.
Frères et soeurs, lever nos mains vers Jésus, adorons Jésus !
Je t'adore !
Il mérite l'adoration, ce matin !
Oui, je t'adore ! De tout mon cœur. De toute ma force. Je t'adore. J'aime t'adorer. Oui, je t'adore ! Jésus, oui, je t'adore ! De tout mon cœur. De toute ma force. Je t'adore. J'aime t'adorer. De tout mon cœur. De toute ma force. Je t'adore. Oui, j'aime t'adorer. Je t'adore. Oui, j'aime t'adorer. Je t'adore. Oui, j'aime t'adorer.
Bonjour, bonjour à tous !
Good morning, everybody. It's so wonderful to be together this morning. As brothers and sisters, around the word of God, to be able to bring our praise and worship, to bring our offering to the Lord. What an opportunity ! What a grace that the Lord has given us ! We want to really make the most of this time. To fully make the most. To be able to continue to serve the Lord and hear his voice, to know his plan, to participate in that great vision in building the Kingdom of God. Building his church, to have part in that. And Paul calls that being coworkers with Christ. And it's wonderful to see that construction and the building that the Lord is doing. And to be part in all of that. This morning, just during this last meeting that we were here together, just to encourage all of us to grow. To grow. Grow in the Lord. To be more and more mature. Men and women that are spiritual, that serve the Lord with all their hearts as we ought to. Perhaps you can open up our Bibles in the book of Colossians. Colossians, chapter 1. And Paul prays, prays here. It's interesting to see how he prays and what he's praying for. And what concerns the people of God, which means all of us. This is what he desires. From verse 9. Colossians 1, verse 9. For this reason, we also, since the day we heard it, do not cease to pray for you and to ask that you may be filled with the knowledge of his will in all wisdom and spiritual understanding. And he is speaking of the revelation of the gospel, that you may walk worthy of the Lord, fully pleasing him, being fruitful in every good work and increasing in the knowledge of God, strengthened with all might according to his glorious power for all patience and long suffering with joy. And that was the heart of the apostle Paul for the church, for the people of God, that they would grow, that they would understand the will of God, that they would be strengthened in every way by his glorious power. And it would always be with joy, persevering, patient. When we serve the Lord, it's the first desire that we need to have is to see the people of God grow, to see them well spiritually, to walk. To walk in the light. And I believe for all of us, we need to have that attitude to want to grow, not just that church, to hear the word of God. And often I ask people, you were there at that meeting, yes. What did God say to you? We can so easily forget the things that God speaks to us about, his word, the direction, the vision that the Lord brings. We always need to have that desire and attitude in our hearts to desire to grow, to desire, to understand more and more the plan of God. What does he have for my life? And that's the vision that all of us that serve the Lord need to have, to see our husbands, wives, our children, our brothers, our sisters, to see them grow spiritually. To have a language that is spiritual, that demonstrates that our brothers, sisters, husbands, wives, that they are progressing in that walk with the Lord and that we are growing. To be more and more established and perfected in the Lord. And if we want to grow, we need to have that desire to want, to grow. But we need to accept that our lives do not belong to ourselves. They do not belong to ourselves any longer. We belong to the Lord and we need to allow him to do what he wants with our lives. We need to accept that, to arrive at that state of heart, humility, and to accept the plan of God and to understand that our lives belong to the Lord and they no longer belong to us, to us. And that's the true Christian life. We can't just hold on to our lives to keep them. But we are called to give our lives. And even as we are here in the presence of the Lord this morning, the attitude we need to have is, "Lord, show me." How I can give my life more and more? What do you have for me? What is your plan for my life? Speak, Lord. And often the Lord does speak. He leads us, he guides us by his Holy Spirit. And we often don't take notice. We don't listen, we don't hear. But James says, "It's not just about listening, but we also need to put into practice." It's not a technique or a theory, but it's an attitude in our hearts that we need to have, that I want to grow. I want to grow spiritually and to become like Christ more and more. That's the desire of my heart and that's why the Lord has saved us. While we are here on this earth, to desire, to grow, never to be satisfied. And that's a tendency that each and every one of us can have. We hear the gospel. We have had an experience with the Lord. We've had victory in certain areas of our lives. And then we just kind of allow ourselves just to go along. And we have a comfortable life and we're happy with things. But that's not the attitude that we need to have. We always need to be desiring to grow, to know Jesus as we ought to. And that's really my encouragement for us today. And I believe that the Lord wants each and every one of us to take a look at our lives, to take account of where we are today. How do we react and respond? How do we respond when we hear the Lord? What is our reaction and response when we go through difficult times in life? It's not just about knowing. It's not just to know. We need to be like this or like that. We all know the word of God, don't we? We read the word of God, it's clear. There's no ambiguity. We know. But how do we live? How do we live in our families? As a husband, as a wife, as a brother, a sister? How do we react? Are we growing? There's a progress in our lives. And that's the prayer of the apostle Paul here that we've just read, to walk from progress to progress, to know the Lord, to carry that revelation of the gospel more and more. And what's the point of being here and hearing the word of God? And yet, at the same time, for example, our marriage is in a great mess. There's no progress, there's no growth. And perhaps it's even deteriorating. But what is the point in coming and hearing the word of God? But we need to have that attitude to desire, to progress and grow. The key in all of that, as I was saying earlier, the key is, am I desiring to lose my life? You cannot keep your life if you want to grow. It's impossible. Now, the Bible tells us, Jesus says, "He who wants to save his life will lose it." If you only keep it, you'll lose it. And if you lose your life, for his sake, you will find it in the Lord. So there's no doubt. There's no doubt for the Christian. He needs to have that attitude to desire to grow, to be perfected in the Lord. And let's just put a clear foundation before we continue to see how I am compared to to see where I am today compared to what we are going to be sharing. I need to accept, I need to accept to lose my life. If we can have that as a foundation today, there's no other solution. It's not a question of just praying or only reading our Bible, no. It's not just about just learning, about learning our Bible. It's not only that, but I need to be ready to lose my life. And that I need to be ready to allow the Lord to do what he desires in my life. And we know what he wants. We know what he desires. He desires that we would more and more resemble Christ. It's a price we need to pay for that, the giving of our lives. Apostle Paul. He says that, Paul says that we need to offer our lives as a living sacrifice in Romans, chapter 12, to offer our lives, to lay it upon the altar. That's a difficulty that many Christians have when they refuse the gospel, to refuse to accept to lose their lives, to just place it on the altar. There are many Christians, when they start, there may be fear. They're scared to lose their lives. But there's nothing we can do in our own strength. We have spoken yesterday about the grace of God and it's only by the grace of God that we can be able to place our lives on the altar and allow the Lord to do what he wants to do. There's no other option. And if we want to finish that race, there's no option. But where, what is that foundation? You want to save your life? You'll lose it. You take a parallel road, another road. You can have a great spiritual language, a Christian language. There's a lot of Christians that have a very good language. They understand a lot of things that God wants, etc., "Alléluia, glory to God", we sing, we praise the Lord. But your life, our own, our very lives, can we examine our lives today through the word of God? To help us to see where we are and what God is expecting of us? How do we live every day? It's our everyday lives that we're speaking about here. To expect our lives every day? And when we do that, we will understand. And when we do that, we will understand. We need to see, am I determined to grow or do I want to stay where I am or am I actually going backwards? I believe that everybody wants to grow, but not everybody is ready to grow and ready to lose their lives. It's true. It's true, what are we saying? But I want to encourage you. Every single day that goes by is one day less before the return of Christ. And we know. All that is happening around us shows us we're not going to stay here on earth, us as Christians. The Lord is preparing things. What is happening in the world today is not a coincidence. It's not the anger of a man or the rage of anybody. It's not the plan of a man. And we need to accept there's someone that is on the throne, that reigns, who has a plan, has a calendar. And he knows why he allows things to take place. He is arranging things as he desires. And we need to discern all of these things. Otherwise, we're going to fall into panic, fear. But let's stay calm. Let us not worry or be anxious because Jesus is on the throne. He's on the throne and He reigns. There's nothing that takes place if the Lord Himself does not allow it to happen. He has a plan, and the plan will come to pass in the days that He so desires. That's why we need to be prepared to grow, to grow spiritually, to be ready for this wonderful day. James speaks in chapter five. He speaks of patience. Patience, he speaks of two things, to prepare ourselves for the return of Christ. He speaks of suffering and patience. Quite strange, almost. In chapter five, verse seven. "Therefore be patient brethren, until the coming of the Lord." "See how the farmer waits for the precious fruit of the earth, waiting patiently for it until he receives the early and later rain. You also be patient; establish your hearts, for the coming of the Lord is at hand." Verse 10. "My brethren, take the prophets who spoke in the name of the Lord as an example of suffering and patience." Amen. And so that's the call of God, that's the call of God here. Let's be serious now. Let's have a look now, the fruits, the fruits of maturity. When I grow. When I'm on the road of perfection. There's fruits that come from my life. There's things that I do, that I say, the attitudes that I have in my heart that need to demonstrate that I am growing spiritually with the Lord. So the first thing that many people today struggle with, they don't want to find themselves under authority. They don't want to find themselves under authority. Christians, they have a tendency to be independent, to, that means to do what they want to do. The Holy Spirit is in me, I hear His voice, I hear Him. And I don't need to submit myself to anybody. But my brothers and sisters, that's a great error. Because every Christian needs to find himself or herself under an authority somehow. Whether it be their husband, whether it's a wife, an elder, whoever it might be, they need to find themselves under the, under a spiritual authority. Firstly, the authority of God, but God also establishes things within His church. And so God transmits His authority to those so that each and everyone might find themselves under an authority and in submission. I believe that it's so important for us to understand that today. There's too much independence in the church today. We each person wants to hear the voice of God for themselves. Yes, of course, there's a place to hear the voice of God for us personally, for each and every one of us. There's a place to be led by the Holy Spirit, where the Holy Spirit leads us to do things, say things. It's true. But also, we need to understand how the Lord is placed in the church, that authority, so that each one would find themselves under that authority. And the moment that we want to come out from under that authority, we don't accept that. It shows that we are independent. And that's not the place that we need to be, whether it be in our family, in the church, or with brothers, sisters, the authority of the church. There's no place for independence. It's dangerous. So dangerous in so many different circumstances, situations of our lives, to not go and look for counsel. We're not going to just go place ourselves under an authority that's going to try and direct us in the way that they want to. But there are decisions that are very serious that we need to take, and it's good to share and speak, seek for counsel. And not just to do things just by ourselves, but to have that relationship. And to realize that we have got to place us under that authority and to seek for that counsel. And it doesn't just mean to to place ourselves under the control of somebody. What's important to understand is when we understand the leadership and authority in the church has as a foundation the gospel of Jesus Christ, the cross of Christ, and it's in the leadership. And that's where, when we see that there are men that are leading that are broken before the Lord, that is a safety for us. And that those men, because they're broken by the Lord, will not use that authority to to bring anything that is of themselves, but to know that they are accountable to the Lord. There are many Christians that have been hurt because there are men that are leading them that are wanting just to control their lives and to lead their lives in a way that's hard. And they find themselves under certain obligations to do certain things. But I'm not talking about that kind of leadership. It's not what we're talking about, because that destroys. But what you are talking about is leadership where there are men that are called by the Lord, who are walking on the road of the cross, that are continually formed by the Lord, humble, broken. That bring the heart of the Lord for the people of God. And how can we not feel those things? That's what we need, that's what the people of God need, to find themselves under that type of authority. Not to control them, but to help them, to help them to understand the plan of God for their lives. Not only through the word of God, but just through good counsel. And it's not an obligation, but the choice is for each and every one of us. But it's good for us to find ourselves with that state of heart of submission. It's so important. But often in the church today, we see that there is this attitude, where each one just does his own thing. Each one wants to hear the Lord, the word of God for themselves. They have the Holy Spirit as everyone else does, so they don't need to seek counsel from anybody or to submit to anybody in any kind of relationship. They don't seek that, but it's so important for us. So it's the fruit of maturity. When you understand the plan of God, we grow, we have a heart that is ready to submit. And that's so important. So we need to see the difference between authority of control and an authority that builds the lives of people. It's so different. That's where the Christian needs to feel where he is. And how that authority acts, reacts, and the fruits of that in our lives to build, it's so important. And that's where we see in the word of God, we see how Paul worked. And if we, if we don't understand the building of the church, the way that the Lord builds His church, we could say that he was, we could think that he's someone that's trying to control things or to lead many different things, but no, there was such a relationship amongst the men of God that were working with him. And when he said, "This person, go over there. This person, go join with that person. Do this or do that." It's a fellowship, it was a team, there was the same spirit, the same heart, the same desire. So there's no problem to submit to that. There's no problem. And that's why today, in the team that works together with us, we work together for, we've been working together for forty years. Have you seen that in many places? People that have worked together for thirty-five, forty years, that are submitted to one another, that are ready to forgive each other, to repent, to submit to one another. That submission for you is as important as it is for me. And for all of us, we need some type of authority over our lives. The family, it's the same thing. With the children, there's a submission that is important. We need to seize that. There are so many Christians that take decisions for their lives. They take decisions that destroy their lives. They don't seek for counsel, good godly counsel, or confirmation from others. Or certain important decisions for their lives. Then afterwards, they destroy their lives. So it's important to have that heart of submission, to be submitted and to know that we are in a family. And we need to have that authority over our lives somehow. So you can just say, "I'm under the authority of God." Yes, but God has placed that authority that He has delegated to people, to men in the church. We need to understand. So that's the first thing. So for him who wants to grow and is mature, he understands the place where he needs to be in relationship. Okay, the second thing that we're going to speak about today is important. We're going to speak about it quickly. I meet a lot of Christians. We meet a lot of Christians. And we see that there's a lot of Christians who live with unforgiveness. And they have lived like that for so many years, many years. My wife had some time with a sister once, and as we were praying, we shared about forgiveness. My wife asked, that sister, "Are you sure you don't have anything in your heart towards somebody that you haven't forgiven them for?" The lady said. "Yes, there's somebody that I haven't forgiven for so many years." My wife prayed for her. My wife said, "No, I'm actually not going to pray for you until you have forgiven that person. Otherwise, there's no point in me praying for you. And when you do, the Lord will set you free. You'll be well in your heart." My wife said, "I'm going to leave you here, and when you're ready, you tell me." We continue to pray for others. And then she came back to that sister and said, "Are you ready?" She said, "Yes." I don't know, it was like forty, forty years or something that she had not forgiven. She had that unforgiveness in her heart for all that time. My brothers and sisters, the forgiveness, it's the first thing that is so important for us as Christians. We need to forgive. It's that foundation for us. It's like we being as children, it's the foundation for us as Christians. We cannot live with unforgiveness in our hearts. And Jesus said, "If you forgive your brother or sister, your Father in heaven will forgive you, but if you do not forgive, your heavenly Father will not forgive you." So how can we find ourselves in a place, a situation? We have not forgiven somebody, and yet we are, and at the same time, we are not forgiven by God because of that. It's horrible. It's terrible. So we need to have a heart that is free each and every day. And not to keep anything in our hearts before we go to sleep. There's so many situations in our everyday lives where we can harden our hearts towards somebody, whether it be our husband, our wife, our children, a brother or a sister. There are so many opportunities every day. Someone has been aggressive towards you, or they speak in a way that's hard, whatever. There's situations every single day where we can harden our hearts towards somebody. Is that true or not? How do we react to that? And if we are a spiritual Christian, we cannot keep unforgiveness in our hearts. Unforgiveness demonstrates that we are a child, a child spiritually, but we need to grow and to release, to let go. And to keep a heart that is free, no animosity, bitterness, hardness towards other people. We need to release all of that. You know the story with Peter? And when Peter said to Jesus, "How many times should I forgive my brother? Seven times?" For him, it was like, this was a huge number. So Jesus said, "Seventy times seven." Well, we can say that's a pretty big number. We cannot keep unforgiveness in our hearts. We need to forgive, release, let go. Husbands, wives, let go. Quickly. Our flesh just wants to react, to justify ourselves. Do you want to have a good recipe? A very good recipe. Just stay quiet. Just stay quiet. There's a situation? Stay quiet, release, let go. It hurts. Your pride takes a big hit because you want to justify ourselves. We want to say something, we want to respond. We want to prove our point. We want to claim our rights. Let's just stay quiet, close your mouth, swallow, grow, release, let go. And you will sleep well at night. That's the recipe. And as, the more and more that we react and respond in that way, we will learn to forgive quickly. We're not going to dwell for one week with that in our hearts, to stay in that place. Or for hours, we're just sitting in that situation. We learn to take our cross. If you want to grow, you need to lose your life. That's where we started. We don't keep our lives for ourselves. It's the same thing in that situation, when we repent. To repent. That's what's hard. Husbands, wives, brothers, sisters. To repent, to accept that we are wrong, to accept our error, our attitude, our actions, our words. We repent. It's hard, eh? Very, very, very hard. I'm not sure if you're like me, but hard, it's very hard. Very hard. Often, we turn around in circles. We know we need to go humble ourselves. The Holy Spirit reveals that to us, but we walk around, we turn in circles. Our flesh just resists. Our pride will not allow us, doesn't want to let us to bow our knee, humble ourselves. But because we want to grow. Because we want to walk as the Lord wants us to. We allow the Lord to break that pride in us. We humble ourselves, we repent. And we continue. And that is the Christian life every day. Forgive, repent, forgive, repent. Has that ever happened to you? I hope I'm not the only one. I'm sure I'm not. It's a reality. These are two things in the life of a Christian. That are permanent. It does not stop. But it shows us that we want to grow. The Christian who repents is a Christian who shows that he is growing spiritually. The Christian who forgives, who does not stay with a hard heart, is a Christian who has an attitude where they want to grow. We're speaking of our everyday life. We're not going to any big teachings today. But it's the simple things of everyday life, the basics. Forgive, we release, we let go, we repent. It's so tough. Husband, is it tough? Hello? Are you guys there? It's tough, eh? But that is the road, to keep that peace, to keep that joy. Unity. That's the road. And that's why that road is narrow for us. It's not a wide road, it's a narrow road. We really need to be careful in our Christian lives. To consider these two, these two things in our Christian life. It can poison our lives if we don't forgive, repent. It's like a cancer. We can even go into depression because it just eats us within. We need to keep a pure heart. Keep your heart more than all things, above all things, release, let go. Be ready to lose. Lose. I always will remember. That time that I had with the pastor. The first time I ever met him. We just spoke a bit about the gospel and... He was in a situation. There was a lack of unity. And we saw that division in the church between him and someone else. Another responsible, another leader in the church. And it got to a point where it really, things started to heat up. And by the grace of God, I was able to share with him, communicate certain things with him. We had so much in common. And the church had been in the name of the two of these leaders. So the church belonged to the two, they had a church car that belonged to the two. Everything was shared between the two of them. So it was a huge fight between the two of them. Who gets what, etc. It was ugly. I said, "My brother, there's one thing for you to do. Take the keys of that car, give it to him. Hand over everything, whether it be the building, give it over, release. Be ready to lose. And the Lord will never forget what you have done. That's the road that you need to take. By the grace of God, he did it. And today, he is serving the Lord. And he doesn't know... And even now, he doesn't know how to respond to the churches and leaders that are coming to him. How the Lord in return has given him so much, a hundred times, thousand times more than anything that he had ever given up. And that's why as a Christian, we need to be ready to lose, to release, to forgive that person. Keep our hearts pure. He could have come out of that bitter, after having lost everything. Trying to fight for justice was a suffering for him, but he did it. That price, the decision, he did it. And today, it's somebody that's so content and happy and is service for the Lord. That's why we need to learn to keep our hearts more above all things. Not to owe anybody anything, and that shows maturity, maturity. Now we are called to have the same attitude that Jesus himself had, same attitude. He did not keep anything in his heart. His heart was always clear, pure. He always forgave. That was his last words. When he spoke on the cross and he said, "Forgive them, Father, for they know not what they do." He was in his suffering to see the hardness of hearts before him. And how those men were treating him so cruelly. And he said, "Forgive them. They don't know what they do." For us, it's the same. We need to keep our hearts pure. Not allow our hearts to be hardened. Bitterness, or whatever it may be, to allow those things to rest in our hearts, but to let go. There's a platform for the Lord to act and work in our lives. We lay that platform in our lives for the Lord to bless us and to do whatever he desires in our lives. There's so many miracles that will follow that when we keep our hearts pure. We don't allow our hearts to be hardened. It's something so basic, but it's often so tough, it's a suffering, it's a death to allow the Lord, allow the Lord to break those things in us. But that's, that's the way he forms us and his preparation in our lives. As we grow, the more that there's that forgiveness, repentance in us, the more that it will become a normal thing for us. We will not allow those things to dwell in us. A lot of Christians are paralyzed, disabled. They cannot grow. They cannot have peace in their houses, in their homes. Unforgiveness, a lack of repentance. It's an element of destruction in a family, in a couple. It destroys couples. Division, anger. All these things, they take root in families. But we need to forgive, forgive your husband, my sister, pardon your wife, my brother. Let go of that situation. Keep your heart pure. You will see how you will grow. You'll see how those things will be established in your heart. Great, great words are good, but it's the heart. All that there is in the heart. We can have whatever revelation we believe that we could have. But if we are not able to forgive and repent, keep our hearts pure, you will stay a child in the spirit. You'll stay a child. The Book of Hebrews, chapter five. We'll see how the author of the Book of Hebrews speaks about the necessity of growing. Maturity, spiritual maturity, the life of the Christian. In verse eleven, he says, "Of whom we have much to say and hard to explain since you have become dull of hearing." "For though by this time you ought to be teachers." You need something, someone to teach you again the first principles of the oracles of God. You have come to need milk. And not solid food. "I can't even speak to you about deep things," the author here says. "I just have to give you milk. You're slow to understand." It's a way of saying, "You're not obeying what we are asking of you." You prefer to justify yourself. You prefer to be right, but you're not ready to humble yourself, to release, to let go, to forgive. And he says here, "For everyone who partakes only of milk is unskilled in the word of righteousness, for he is a babe." But solid food belongs to those who are full age, that is, those who by reason, youths have their senses, exercise to discern both good and evil. You know, in the body of Christ today, we're going to finish on that today. The body of Christ, there are millions of Christians that have been deceived and hurt by so many different situations. And many of them keep those experiences in their lives. They carry all these bad experiences in their lives. And often, those hurts, that deception, those, all these things that have come, bring them to criticize, to judge, to speak negatively. So finally, there's a state. There's a state that they find themselves in where they are in the midst of destroying themselves. They destroy themselves. And instead of looking at themselves and how the Lord wants to set them free in their hearts, they turn towards the past. They speak just of their past. They live their past again. They judge. There's bitterness in their hearts, animosity. They don't understand, they question. And they are just destroying themselves. And there are millions of Christians in that very state, millions. And all we need to do is just stop, stop with all those things and to give our lives, humble ourselves, let go and allow the Lord to do all that he wants to do. Forgive, release, and we finish with all the past. And it's finished. We start a new life, a new race with a heart that is pure and is not hardened. We need to be so careful that our past is controlling our lives. Our past cannot control our lives. We need to finish with all those bad experiences of the past. To release, forgive, to be free in our hearts. And that's how the Lord will add, will reveal things to us, to bring us to grow, to be men and women that are spiritual, those that are spiritual. Not to stay as children and pointing our fingers to this person, that person. You may even be right. Perhaps you are even right in that situation from your past. But we cannot just point our fingers. The one thing we need to do is to say, "Lord, what do you want to do in my own life?" It's not for you to see what God needs to do in other people's life, but you need to see what God wants to do in your life. In every situation, each trial, tribulation, or injustice towards you, or towards me, or any of us. What does God want to do in my life? We don't try and see what God wants to do in other people's lives. Release that person in the hands of the Lord. And we cut. We just bring ourselves to submit and submit to what God wants to do at that time in our lives. In our lives. That's the key. There's a conflict between two people, me and somebody else. We don't agree. But where's the problem? Are we going to fight about that? No. What do we do? We let go. We let go. And we don't speak about it. If we truly release and let things go, we don't speak about it. If you let go, you're not judging, you're not criticizing. And oftentimes, Christians, they walk in that state. They harden their hearts. And the devil, he doesn't sleep. He doesn't sleep. He's going to bring all sorts of thoughts concerning that situation, those people. So we need to learn to lose, to lose, to lose our lives. We need to learn to lose. And it's when we lose that we receive. We lose in that time, but we win and we gain something in the time to come. Let's not allow our flesh to take over, but rather allow our flesh and the desires of our flesh to die with its passions and all the desires. Let's not stay in that place. Don't stay in that place, I beg you. Let's come out of that place. You might have been crushed down, humbled. Have the same mind that was in Christ Jesus, the same mind that was in him. Keep quiet. Keep quiet. Accept, die. It hurts. It's a suffering. But in return, we come back to the cross of Jesus Christ and we will have life. We come back to the cross of Jesus Christ, and we will have life. The life of Jesus that comes out of that. So I beg you, please, don't stay in that place where there's that interior conflict. Perhaps it's finished a year ago, two, two years ago, three years ago. But that, that conflict should not dwell in your hearts now. Forgive. Let go. Repent in all circumstances. Where the Holy Spirit asks you to do so. And these are signs of maturity. We need to stop just having only, just a knowledge of the Bible. But we need to live the reality of the gospel. And that's what will, will show. Our maturity, that we have grown. That we are busy living. Not only us living, but that Jesus is living in us. We forget all these things from the past. We're going to take the table of the Lord today with an attitude of freedom. And if you, if in your heart you are struggling with something. With your past. With a situation. If somewhere you are struggling, there's a conflict. We're going to pray. We're going to put order in that. We're going to allow the, the Lord bring a freedom. That's where you'll find your peace. That's where you will find your peace. Be careful. Because if you do not release. You will, you will then, uh. You'll pass that, that cancer, you will infect somebody else. As you speak about your situation and the way that you have been treated, the way that you have experienced things. The injustices that you have experienced. But when you, when you have released and let go of everything, you don't need to speak about all of those things to anybody. Or to give all your news to everybody. It's finished. Wait for the Lord now to do a great miracle in your life, to set you free. Wait for all that the Lord has for you. Wonderful things. And as long as you stay in that conflict, we need to understand that it's a spiritual thing. It's not just a natural thing, it's a spiritual thing that God does. Don't stay in that spiritual conflict. Whether you're right or you're wrong. And even if you're right, it's even worse sometimes. It's the, it's really the time to release. You know, when we lose our lives, we have, we no longer have any rights. We've, we no longer have rights. We accept to lose our lives. What rights do we have? The Lord wants to heal, he wants to restore. He wants to cleanse us, purify us. He wants us to serve him, not just with my past, but with my present, knowing that in the future. The Lord will lead all things. Thank you, Lord. Is that clear? Is it clear, encourage your husband or your wife. Let's not speak anymore about situations that have, that have hurt us or disturbed us somehow. Whatever those situations may be in your life, I don't know. But I know. That the Lord. Wants to bring a, a freedom. So as we take the table of the Lord today. We're going to say, "Jesus, I am ready." "I'm ready to identify with your sufferings." I continue to identify with your death. Because I, I want to carry your life. In the Gospel of John. Chapter six. John, chapter six. Fifty-three. Six, verse fifty-three. "Jesus said to them, most assuredly I say to you, unless you eat the flesh of the Son of Man. And drink his blood. You have no life in you." Whoever eats my flesh. I think we understand, all of us. It's not in the, in the natural, in the natural sense that Jesus is speaking here. We can't eat the flesh of the Son of Man. And to drink his blood, it's the same thing. We cannot have life. That fellowship, the table of the Lord. It's a confirmation. There's a confirmation. As we take that bread. That represents. The body of Christ. Broken on the cross. This piece of bread that we're going to take. It represents the suffering of Christ. His body that was broken at the cross. It represents his suffering. And Jesus said, "Unless you eat the flesh of the Son of Man." In other words, if you're not ready. To identify with his sufferings. The body of Christ. That represents the body of Christ, broken. And so it's up to us now. When he says, "Eat." Eat my flesh. From my body, accept. To identify with my suffering. And unless you drink of my blood. And how that represents that death. He gave his last drop of blood, and he gave up his spirit. If you do not eat my flesh, flesh, Jesus said, and drink of my blood. You cannot have life. And we return, we come back to what? We come back to the cross. Suffering. Suffering. And death. And the life of Christ in us is that life of resurrection. That's why this morning. Whatever you'll be facing. Whatever you are doing today. Whatever you need to do, placing order in relationships, husbands, wives. With your children or whoever it may be. When you take the table of the Lord this morning. You declare, "Jesus, I'm ready." "I'm ready to continue to take my cross and to follow you." "I'm ready to identify with your suffering." "I'm ready to identify with your death." Because I want only one thing. The life of resurrection. That resurrection life, your life, Jesus, that's what I want. I want to be a testimony of the power of your life. I want to manifest. That fragrance. Of the knowledge of Christ. Let's thank the Lord today. Let's thank the Lord. We will participate in the table of the Lord, in this attitude of heart. And you will go back to your place today, your home, after having put order in your heart. Whoever it may be, whatever the situation. Whatever the problem. Nothing is too good, too great for the Lord, and that he cannot intervene in. And by the Holy Spirit, he can restore and heal, to cleanse us, and to finish with all the past. That we're ready to participate in the suffering of Christ. Let's thank the Lord. For this blessed time. Let's thank the Lord. And let's eat this bread. Each of us. Jesus also said. Whoever eats my flesh and drinks my blood. He dwells in me and I dwell in him. Let's take the cup. With grace. Thank you, Lord. What a wonderful Jesus we are serving. As we take the table of the Lord, let's, let's share the love of God with one, one another. We are part of a great big family of God. It's so wonderful, so wonderful.
Il revient bientôt nous. Chantons ensemble, chantons ensemble. Célébrons, célébrons. Tu vis, Jésus? Tu es vivant. Il revient bientôt nous. Chercher ta bonté, ta bonté. Mais c'est grand et élevé, élevé. Ton amour est immense et plus élevé que les cieux. Ô Dieu que tu es bon. Ta bonté, ta bonté est si grand et élevé, élevé. Ton amour est immense et plus élevé que les cieux. Ô Dieu que tu es bon. S'il fallait vraiment célébrer toute ta bonté, il faudrait plus qu'une vie pour la chanter. S'il fallait vraiment être vraiment reconnaissant, mon seul plus jamais suffisant. Ta bonté est immense et élevé, élevé. Ton amour est immense et plus élevé que les cieux. Ô Dieu que tu es bon. O ta bonté, o ta bonté est si grand et élevé, élevé. Ton amour est immense et plus élevé que les cieux. Ô Dieu que tu es bon. Ô Dieu que tu es bon. Ô Dieu que tu es bon. Ce dont j'ai besoin, Christ seul me suffit. Christ seul me suffit. Tout ce dont j'ai besoin est en toi. Tout ce dont j'ai besoin, Christ seul me suffit. Christ seul me suffit. Tout ce dont j'ai besoin est en toi. Tout ce dont j'ai besoin, Christ seul me suffit. Christ seul me suffit. Tout ce dont j'ai besoin est en toi. Tout ce dont j'ai besoin. Oui, j'ai décidé de suivre Jésus. Oui, pour toujours. Oui, pour toujours. Oui, j'ai décidé de suivre Jésus. Oui, pour toujours. Oui, pour toujours. Devant moi, le monde derrière moi. Oui, pour toujours. Oui, pour toujours. La croix devant moi. Le monde derrière moi. Oui, pour toujours. Oui, pour toujours. La croix devant moi. La croix devant moi. Le monde derrière moi. Oui, pour toujours. Oui, pour toujours. La croix devant moi. Le monde derrière moi. Oui, pour toujours. Oui, pour toujours. Christ seul me suffit. Christ seul me suffit. Christ seul me suffit. Tout ce dont j'ai besoin est en toi. Tout ce dont j'ai besoin, Christ seul. Sois seul Seigneur. Ô Christ seul. Tout ce dont j'ai besoin est en toi. Tout ce dont j'ai besoin est en toi. Tout ce dont j'ai besoin est en toi. Tout ce dont j'ai besoin. Et nous nous avons cru et nous avons connu que tu es le Christ, le Fils du Dieu vivant. Seigneur, à quel autre irions-nous qu'à toi? Tu as les paroles de la vie éternelle. Et nous nous avons cru et nous avons connu que tu es le Christ, le Fils du Dieu vivant. Et nous nous avons cru et nous nous avons cru et nous avons connu le Fils du Dieu vivant. Et nous nous avons cru et nous avons que tu es le Christ, que tu es le Christ, que tu es le Christ, le Fils du Dieu vivant.
Alléluia! Les frères et sœurs, on vous encourage à reprendre votre place. Et puis on va continuer un petit moment. Prenez votre place. Ils doivent partir et on les salue, que le Seigneur les bénisse. Nous avons été bénis tellement. Merci à eux.
And we sing that I am full of joy, an immense joy. I am so happy because Jesus has set me free.
Je suis dans la joie, une joie immense. Je suis dans l'allégresse car Jésus. Est-ce que vous êtes dans la joie? Je suis dans la joie. Alléluia! Une joie immense. Je suis dans l'allégresse car Jésus. Je chanterai, je chanterai de tout mon cœur des merveilles de mon papayahweh. Il m'a ôté des ténèbres. Il m'a délivré. Je chanterai, je chanterai de tout mon cœur des merveilles de mon papayahweh. Il m'a ôté des ténèbres. Oh, mon papa, mon papa! Il est fidèle. Je n'ai plus rien à craindre car Jésus. Je suis dans la joie. Je suis dans la joie. Une joie, une joie immense. Je suis dans l'allégresse car Jésus. Est-ce qu'on est dans la joie? Je suis dans une joie. Chante-nous notre joie. Je suis dans l'allégresse car Jésus. Oh, je suis dans la joie. Je suis dans, alléluia! Une joie immense. Je suis dans l'allégresse car Jésus. Car Jésus m'a libéré. Car Jésus m'a libéré. Alléluia, Jésus!
Chante, quelle magnifique chante qui nous rappelle ce que nous avons vécu ce matin. Jésus nous a libérés, Jésus nous a rendus libres. Alléluia! Merci Seigneur. Prenez place quelques minutes. On a un petit programme après. We just have a few things we'd like to share with you. We'd like to encourage you that this is the gospel that changes our lives. I've been hearing this gospel for 36 years and it has transformed my life, my home, my children. And today I see God's grace and the privilege that there are so many of us who hear this gospel today that transforms us. Before the gospel was very theoretical, it was knowledge. But in his grace, God has brought us back to a gospel that is pragmatic, that changes our life on an everyday basis by expecting, waiting for him to act and by watching over our hearts and keeping our hearts pure. This is a message that we must share, we must transmit and share among every Christian, every Christian that we know because the Lord wants to change lives. That is the good news of the gospel. Glory to God. So we would like to show you a tiny, a short video about CTMI and then there will be a short video for the app, the CTMI app that you can download on your phone. For the sanctification of Christians so that they can become more and more like Jesus. There, it breaks down all racial, denominational, class, background barrier and enlightens the body of Christ. This message was deposited in the heart of Brother Mickey many years ago. And in 2001, CTMI was founded in Mauritius. Mauritius works, sorry, CTMI has developed networks across Africa and the whole world. Conflict and division in the church and churches and in families are a daily reality for Christians and pastors feel often, often feel very alone when facing these challenges. So CTMI organizes all across Africa and other countries conferences to strengthen leaders and pastors in the gospel. And our large team of elders are sent all over the world to visit local churches, to visit pastors who want to deepen their relationship with CTMI and to encourage the saints. We have so many testimonies of marriages that have been restored and churches that have been healed. The Lord is building his church, a strong church, without compromise, living freely under the new covenant, ready to take a stand for the gospel of Jesus Christ, standing firm against heresy, false doctrine and persecution. And building the church, it starts with each one of us. Pastors, servants of God are called to be examples in their houses and in their churches of true servants who are broken and humble, filled with compassion and grace for God's people, teaching the truth in love, teaching God's heart. The ministry is serious and we work together in these last days to build God's people and his church. Pour plus d'informations, visitez le site www.ctm.org. Check out our website, www.ctm.org. You can download our app for free for access to all of the messages and other resources.